I'd like to call this May 15 Fridley School Board Meeting to order. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Prueto. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will start out with our spotlight on recognition. Dr. Flathman.
It is my pleasure to introduce our Employee of the Month this month for May. And her name is, drum roll please, Sue Baker is one of our high school kitchen staff. And there she is with lovely Ms. Mary Mueller as well. This is what Mary wrote about her. She has taken on very different roles in the high school kitchen with ease and is always willing to help out. Most recently, Sue stepped in as the manager at FHS when there was this vacancy suddenly. She has literally transformed every aspect of the kitchen management in a very positive way. She does her best every day to make tasty and appealing food for kids and is always thinking about ways to improve what we serve. She's willing to try new ideas and is great at providing feedback. The high school students aren't the only ones who benefit from Sue's knowledge. She shares what she knows with the kitchen managers in our other schools and to improve food that they are serving as well. She makes every day a good day for herself and staff. She is great with students and staff alike and Nutritional Services is incredibly lucky to have her. So congratulations to Sue Baker.
Thank you. Do you want to move forward with the public school retirees?
Yes, we have a number of people. Every year, this is somewhat of a tricky thing to do because there are people that want to be recognized and there are others that don't. And so we know that there are retirees that will probably show up after the recognition date, which is tomorrow afternoon. But here are eight people that have, 133, I'm not that old. Dr. Peggy Flathman is superintendent, Ingrid Goosey is an instructor at community education, Jenny Ranallo, a paraprofessional at Haze, Terry Reeser, special education coordinator, Rick Robel, our media specialist at the high school, Joanne Rusniak, early childhood special ed teacher, Marcia Savical, paraprofessional at Stevenson, and Maddy Yamucci, paraprofessional at the middle school. So congratulations to these fine folks. And you will note tonight in our board meeting that there are others that have submitted after the deadline date. But we certainly congratulate everyone for their years of service. And the ceremony will be tomorrow around 4:15 at FCC.
Will you be among them?
I will be among them. Thank you.
We got it on tape. Next, we'd like to bring up Principal Patty Hand to introduce our Minnesota Teacher of the Year finalist.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you for having me. I was trying to think of how to introduce Tim to you. And I thought a lot about it and I thought, why not read the letter I wrote in support of his nomination? I thought this would most clearly and kind of share how I feel about Tim and I feel about his contributions as an educator for Fridley Schools. When learning that one of my teachers at Fridley High School was nominated for Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award, I was thrilled to hear the news. Over the two years that I've had the privilege of working with colleague Tim Listico as his head principal, I've been so impressed with his dedication to his students, dedication to his colleagues, and dedication to the community of Fridley Public Schools. Tim is my most talented, hardest-working ethical teacher I have ever had the opportunity to work with, and without a doubt, he deserves to win Minnesota Teacher of the Year. And I mean that. As a classroom teacher, Tim can be described as a caring, conscientious, enthusiastic, fun teacher who cares deeply for his students. He is so thoughtful as he thinks through his students' learning opportunities, through his classroom activities, and focuses on thoughtful, criteria-based assessments to ensure students are learning at the highest level of achievement. Additionally, Tim's classroom is always lively with students working collaboratively, engaging in their learning process. In particular, Tim volunteered to work in a cohort of teachers focusing on culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning with Dr. Shrocky Holly, a national consultant from Los Angeles. Tim not only completed the CLR training himself, he has become a leader for our high school in this work and works on a national level as a trained consultant with Dr. Holly himself. Tim believes deeply in supporting students through validation and recognition of home culture while building and bridging to academia in order to be successful. With this, Tim leads staff development sessions with our licensed and non-licensed educators and even presents on a district level on a regular basis. Additionally, Tim volunteers to support our staff development team to ensure we continue to focus on mindset and skill set as we institutionalize culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning in our school. And we support all of our schools in a safe, respectful, inclusive environment at Fridley High School. As a colleague, Tim is the epitome of an ethical, hard-working, supportive coworker. He is approachable, helpful, and willing to go the extra mile. Tim is seen as a teacher leader even after his role of instructional coach and leader has ended and is full-time teaching back in the classroom. Further, Tim fulfills other roles for our staff that he is not asked to do, such as keep up the staff resource page and calendar to ensure staff have the information that they need at their fingertips on a daily basis. It is very evident that Tim cares for all students, staff, and families who are part of Fridley High School. As a member of the Fridley Public School community, Tim works to represent the community to ensure Fridley is a positive, welcoming, inclusive environment for all stakeholders involved. He even helps lead a spring arts festival to bring the community and showcase the talents of our students. It is a wonderfully fun event and our community looks forward to it as it grows each year. I give my highest recommendation to support Tim Listico to receive the Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. I have worked for four school districts as a teacher and administrator and I have never worked with someone as talented and dedicated as Tim. Without a doubt, he deserves this recognition as he continues his professional journey as an outstanding educator at Fridley High School.
We got to celebrate with him on that day. And there were about, besides your family members, there were probably about nine of us there, I think.
It was very fun.
It was a great luncheon a couple of weeks ago on Sunday. And to see him up with the other 10 colleagues, I think there were 11 in total.
12.
12. It was pretty amazing. And we were all rooting. But for him, he is our Minnesota Teacher of the Year.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any words for us, Tim?
Well, thank you to Patty. I'll just have her read the letter again.
Wouldn't turn me down.
No, and Dr. Flathman said it well. It was an amazing experience celebrating the awesomeness of educators in Minnesota. And as you know, that Minnesota is a great place to have a child. I have two children in Minneapolis Public Schools that we're very blessed to have a great culture for education in the state. And so to be up there with those other educators was fantastic. And this has been a fun year because the process started. I need to give a shout out to Jessica Baker and Carol Nielsen. They nominated me, which was very humbling that they would, I work with so many amazing educators. And so it's been about a six-month process of applying and going through the different, shout out to David Weber helped me film. One of the parts of the process is filming a response. So thank you, David. But this is finishing up my 13th year in the district. And so it's been a lot of fun reflecting on that time. And a couple of you, I've had your privilege of having your children in my classroom.
No, they've had the privilege of having you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
What do you teach?
Oh, good question. I teach English at the high school, so Language and Literature, IB, Language and Literature, and then a class called Theory of Knowledge. So I'm an English teacher by license. But yeah, I think that my big takeaway is that education is not just, it's not just a profession, it's a calling. And so to be able to celebrate that with educators from around the state and sing the praises of Fridley and start some great connections with the current Teacher of the Year, but also other educators that I met, it's really exciting. Fridley's always been on the forefront of leading, whether it's in IB or in culturally responsive teaching and learning. We are a district, even though we're small, we take on a lot of initiatives to make Minnesota an even better state for education. So to have the opportunity to be a part of that was really amazing. And so the kind words that Patty read, I mean, whether it's Dave Webb, who I started with, Renee Van Gorp, now Patty Hand, I've had amazing leaders to work for, including, of course, Dr. Flathman and everyone else in the district. And so I'm very lucky. I'm very blessed and looking forward to the next 13 or how many more. I've been told by my wife that I'll be working until I'm 70. So I have time.
You'll be around a while.
I don't know if they'll allow me to work until 70 here in the district, but anyway.
Well, on behalf of the school board, we want to thank you for your dedication, for giving Fridley a good name by the work that you do and how that extends out and ripples out through the people that you touch. And thank you for your dedication very much.
We can have one more award.
Oh, jeez, a week.
Because he came here on his birthday.
I've never been to a school board meeting on my birthday. So I figured.
It doesn't get any better.
No, it doesn't.
You can come back even when it's not your birthday if you want. You can come back even when it's not your birthday if you want.
Open invitation.
Superintendent and staff reports, I'd like to invite up Toni Kraft and her entourage to give us a report on community education and the Fridley Community Center.
Thank you very much, Mary. And thanks for having us. It seems like we were just here even though it's been a year. So that's amazing. We will give you a quick report tonight from Community Ed and the Fridley Community Center. Our lead staff, we have, some of us are here, some of us aren't. The ones who are, Janelle Johnson is our Community Ed secretary, and she is going on 25 years this year. So we're very lucky to have, she's just a wealth of knowledge and just a huge support for all of us. So I just wanted to shout out to her 25 years. Stephen Keeler is not here tonight. He is on paternity leave, just had a new baby a week ago. So Rosemary Ruth Keeler is a new addition to he and Liz's family. And Renee Sorgenfree is not here this evening either. She is shortly going to be leaving us as a staff member. As of July 1st, we will have Dr. Val Anderson as our early childhood coordinator. And I'll let everyone else, as they come up, introduce themselves.
All right. I'm Christy Sabian. I coordinate Tiger Club along with Sally Leon. And we wanted to just give you a few highlights of the year looking back and some things looking forward. So I'm going to start with our school age care program. We were at the elementaries and this year we consolidated and moved into the Fridley Community Center. And we have designated classrooms, which we really, really appreciate. And I will do a shout out to Lindsay Crawford, our program manager, because instead of designing the rooms according to grade level, she thought it would be creative to make interest areas in each room so the kids can choose where they want to play. One of the rooms is a recreation room and it's got a corner. It's a great big room, so it's got a corner that's got mats and balls and kind of rush and tumble play. It's got puppet theater. And then there's a room called Discovery Den, which is more about exploration and discovery and science projects and sensory tables. And then there's a calming corner, which is dimly lit. It has art supplies. It has yoga mats. It has lots of books, puzzles. And then play space, which is just kind of more traditional toys and dolls and games and cards. But the kids, they choose their areas where they want to be and they also can play with friends that aren't their same age, a year older or younger. And we have discovered that we have less behaviors and squabbling and bickering. So we're loving it.
Then I'll let you talk about reaccreditation.
Do you have an age limit for those spaces?
So last year at this time, we were kind of celebrating that we had achieved accreditation in our school age programming after working very hard for a couple of years. And then we found out that we were moving to the Community Center. We were previously at each elementarys and achieved accreditation status at those locations. And one of the parts of having the accreditation status is that it's very much attached to the space, the environment that you've provided, and the leadership that is leading the program. And so when we found out we were moving to the Community Center, we knew that we had to report.
They're coming back out, yeah.
And it wasn't just a like, oh, thanks for letting us know. It was a reaccreditation process. So we worked very hard in the fall, and which I should say, Lindsay Crawford worked very hard in the fall and winter for another visit. And in March, we found out that we were reaccredited. So we're very excited about that.
Yeah, thank you. And not the licenser, accreditor, endorser. She actually was so impressed with this model that Lindsay has created that she said she's going to send programs from other districts out to see our space.
Wow.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Yeah. And Lindsay's been busy. She should be here too. The next one is also her doing. She applied for a grant from the Fridley Schools Foundation and was awarded money toward a really proactive training module for her staff. Because we tend to toss them in and then check when we've kind of not given them enough tools. So this will be monthly modules on challenging behaviors and parent communication and bullying and anti-bias. And it's going to be a really neat deal. So, yeah. And then this restructure, I'll just touch on briefly. We did a restructure this past year where we added a layer of leadership. And mostly we did that because for our licensed programs, we need a certain amount of credentials at all, both sides of the day and in between. And so we provide about 40 hours of staff development a year and on all kinds of topics. Staff will share where they feel like they need some additional training and support. And then we have the basic classes and trainings and in services that we need. We also, I think you're well aware of the rubric that was introduced, the evaluation and assessment. We've really enjoyed doing that too because it's easy to put off. And now we're being real intentional about doing it twice a year. And not only does it help us kind of improve performance, but it's also a chance to really acknowledge people who are doing a great job, which we don't always take the time to do.
Yeah. And then to family engagement, I know we do have talked about in the past that we have our family engagement pieces that we do annually. One of our biggest ones is the annual family picnic at the end of every summer, which we've highlighted here in a couple of pictures. And then our Birth to Five program does open houses in the spring and things like that. But one family engagement piece we wanted to highlight this year was that as we moved into the Community Center, Lindsay Crawford wanted to welcome families to that space and make them, and it's a little bit of a new leadership piece for her. We went from two programs to one program manager leading a larger program. So kind of to get to know her, get to know the space, just a new family engagement piece. She designed a spaghetti dinner in the fall, which we ended up having a very huge response to. We had about 90 folks overall, which is quite significant. It's over 50% of our kiddos and their families. And it was just a really great event. The lower picture of the kids with their hands up, that's from that event. They had live entertainment throughout dinner. Dinner was very tasty for starters, but they also had kids doing jokes and a parents versus kids trivia. And then at the end, the main event was the performance. They had a little play that they put together. So it just was a hit. It went really well and we're hoping to build on that and maybe create that as another annual event. So just wanted to highlight that. It was very fun.
And then our Birth to Five, again, we received a lovely award from the Fridley Fine Arts Festival, money to go toward their wish list for translucent light table supplies for our little ones. And they also participated by providing a lot of artwork. And the theme was the handprint. So we provided lots of infant and toddler preschool handprint art and hopefully made a nice contribution to your festival.
Yeah. And before I get to the preschool expansion, as we're preparing for this and thinking about this past year and this upcoming year, we just wanted to acknowledge our infant toddler program. We just, I think we've been in operation with that part of our program for maybe about five years, five or six years. And it's just really grown over the years. And we've gained a really great reputation and been able to maintain family retention and staff retention, which is just really unique in the Twin Cities area for school districts to have infant toddler programming. It's very hard to get off the ground. It's very difficult to operate with the low ratios and stuff like that. And we just really wanted to acknowledge, it's just something that we've, really an achievement to have that flourishing so much. So we really only know of one other district in the Twin Cities area that does infant toddler programming and hasn't been doing it quite as long as us. So it's a wonderful piece and it's definitely a feeder program. Families stay. They join our preschool. They come into school age. It's an introduction into the district. So, yeah.
And Christine Haubach is our program manager at that level. And really, it's an amazing program. Families used to want to come into tour. Now they just call and hope they get in.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we've had a lot of teachers and currently do in that room, those classrooms.
So you can literally grow up in Fridley Schools.
Yeah.
You can.
We're watching.
From six weeks till 18.
That's how we know how old we are because one of our first graders was our first baby. So that's how we'll keep track when he graduates it.
And I think we're going to hear that from birth to 100, maybe. That'll be part of their presentation.
Right.
And you're going to answer the preschool. So the preschool expansion, so as you know, the last couple of years, the district has been doing the four-year-old half-day preschool piece. So this year, we've planned ahead, like much farther ahead, and partnered with that programming and expanded our preschool. So we've increased the number of four-year-old spots, which has pretty much doubled our preschool program overall, or it's going to. It hasn't happened quite yet. It's in anticipation of fall. And that is just trying to create as much equity as possible for families to be able to send their kids. So families that, you know, the half-day might not be enough for them. They need the whole day. We're in the same building now. It just makes sense. So we've done things with being creative with transportation, the rate, the more affordable rate for families, and increased the number of scholarships that are going to be available to families to really create as much, like I said, equity for the families in Fridley to be able to participate in that program. So it's looking really good. It's going well. And that's a huge team of people working on that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice work.
All right. And Lindsay Crawford, who you mentioned numerous times, I do believe was the Employee of the Month in September, this past September. So she's a star. So early childhood programs, I'll talk on behalf of Renee Sorgenfree, these are the programs that she coordinates. And Jason Bodie also, Dr. Bodie has oversight of the preschool programs as well. The top part is our more typical early childhood family ed ECFE classes, which have been around for many, many years and are still very strong in our district. I won't go through all of those, but as you can see, just a variety of programs for parents to come with their kiddos early from birth on. I think one of the things I just want to highlight there is the Spanish-speaking, fully interpreted class. We're in about, I think, our seventh year of offering that. And it's just gone tremendously well. It's very popular and we feel really good about that. Then we have the three-year-old preschool. So this year, we offered that three days a week for three hours a day. We had an AM and a PM, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So there were 40 students altogether, 20 in the morning, 20 in the afternoon. Next year, we are increasing that. We're going to have different options. We'll have a two-day week, a three-day week, and a five-day week option. So now we'll have a capacity of 60 children. We've already got probably 40, last time I checked, enrollments for that for next fall. So again, there's a lot of excitement about that. And then, of course, our four-year-old preschool, the voluntary pre-kindergarten, which is the programming that is no cost to families and does include transportation. This is the first year it's been at the Fridley Community Center. So all our preschool programming is at the Fridley Community Center, which has been great. We just have lots of little ones, which is really nice. So this June, on June 7th, we will have preschool graduation. We'll be graduating 114 four-year-olds who will be well-prepared for kindergarten, which is exciting. Next year, we are increasing one more section. So this year, we have six sections, three morning sections, three afternoon sections. Next year, we're adding one section. So we will have a total of 140 students. The other exciting piece is that we are working towards PYP authorization of the preschool at the Fridley Community Center. We're at the beginning of that process. So that is early childhood.
Hi there. I'm Dan Wald, and I'm the auditorium manager and the events coordinator for the Fridley School District. With the upgrade to the auditorium, which was done about a year and a half ago, it has been a very exciting year working in the new space. The technology and the aesthetics and the environment that has been created there has been a really great opportunity for us. It has found increased usage throughout the district. There are more performance groups that want to be in there all the time. The high school and both the middle school have been using it for large group assemblies where they just had this opportunity, they can gather an entire class together and they bring them in for either for meetings or for just, they've also brought them over to show a movie or whatever the case may be where they can have a large group together. And it's also been used in the high school by many different groups. It is used almost daily by clubs over the lunch hour where they gather the group together. They have the opportunity to use a large group setting to discuss their various clubs. The Key Club specifically has, every three weeks, they have a meeting in there. That's been one of our bigger users. Also, the high school's been using it as an expanded classroom, usually like English class, they'll bring it in. And because it's a large space where they can have the ability to spread out, they have the opportunity for small group discussions. And all these discussions can be going on simultaneously because they have this large space to do it in, unlike a classroom where you have 10 different conversations, kind of overwhelming. But in the auditorium, they have the opportunity to do things like that. Also, there have been a lot of community activities that have been occurring in the auditorium. And the most popular that has really grown in the last year has been the Free Family Movie Night, where we show, in most cases, a recent movie to the community. They can come in. We show it on the big screen. It's absolutely free to anybody who wants to show up. And it's been very popular with families, actually with not only families, but also some of the senior citizens. We have large senior citizen groups that come. So it's been a really exciting time to see how this facility can be used by more than just the student population, but the entire community. Also, because the space is so new and it has so many amenities, it has also been very popular as a rental piece and has generated quite a bit of income for the school district with outside performance groups, with music groups, other private groups have been in there. We have a church which uses it every Sunday. So it's been also generating a lot of revenue for the district. And then along with the space, forward. Which one? This one?
Yep.
Okay. Whoops. Problems with technology. Okay. Fridley Community Theater is a program of Fridley community education and it provides opportunity to use the auditorium and provides opportunity for people to appear on stage and get a theatrical experience. We are doing two productions this summer. We have a youth production of The Lion King Jr. It's a youth enrichment activity offered through Community Ed. In the past, we've offered positions for 40 students. Word got out, people signed up, and we had more than 60 people sign up for it. So we increased it to 50 because we thought, well, maybe if you'll drop out. They didn't drop out. So we decided to go So we decided to go with everyone that had registered for it, and we currently have sixty-three people in the class, and it's gonna be a wild, exciting experience. It's a three-week camp, so for over three day, three and a half hours a day, for a total of fifteen days, they'll learn and learn all the necessary elements to put on production of The Lion King. So I highly recommend to come see that. The performance will be June 29th, 30th, and July 1st at the district auditorium. And then, the main stage production is Sister Act, it's going to be performed on July 20th, 21st, 26th, 27th, and 28th. We hope to capitalize on the huge success that we had from last summer of Beauty and the Beast, and so we think it'll be an exciting time. The show is cast and rehearsals will be starting in about two weeks. So I think the auditorium is well-used.
How many people can the auditorium seat?
Auditor, the auditorium seats are seven hundred people if it's completely full, so it's a very large facility.
And we would like to thank you for your leadership in keeping it full and running it well, and also thank our voters, because that was part of our last levy that they approved. So it's great to know how well not only the district is using it, but our community is using that as a resource as well.
And it's been very fun, last year, our show of Beauty and the Beast, we had great attendance for that show, and we had a lot of feedback from the community, people coming in, and we're excited to be sitting in seats that weren't squeaky, and it's a lovely space, it really is, so, it's exciting. So, to finish up, a few last things, Adult Basic Ed is a program that we are a part of, we have a joint space with Columbia Heights School District down at 4111 Central. Matthew has worked very hard in the last year to work on this lease that we just renewed, so we've just renewed a five-year lease in that space. When I was here last year at this time, we were considering going to a different space, that fell through, and so we were back to the drawing board, and again, after a lot of time and energy, we've renewed the five-year lease, so we're excited about that. Again, it's a huge program that serves many students, statistics are up there, almost a thousand students this past year, sixty-seven countries of origin. Free, the classes are free, it's a huge resource for our parents and our community, so as much as I can, we try to get that word out, because it's just a great place that offers great programming. You can see the classes they offer, the new thing I wanted to highlight are some of those workplace skills classes that they've started to focus on, they're doing one that's an intro to commercial driver's license, they've done some culinary arts classes, and they're just starting one about intro to being a childcare worker, and actually, we're having a meeting tomorrow, we're trying to partner with them to hopefully work with our childcare program and their program to partner up and get some interns hopefully to work with us, so that's exciting. But again, a great resource for our community at 4111 Central. This would be Stephen Keeler's Many Hats, adult, youth, aquatics, and facilities rental. So under adults, our encore trips, which are for our soon-to-retire, recently retired folks, fifty-plus, have been very popular. Newsies was at Chan Hessen, they went to Timbers Wills game, they went to the Guthrie, upcoming, they have a Twins game, so there are a lot of outings, they're very popular with kind of our younger senior population. The thing we're gonna explore for next year, we've talked about some potential classes that could be joint or combo classes that would be attractive to the ALC students and adults, welding is one of the things that was talked about, so trying to get kind of creative about offering some joint or combo classes, we're looking towards that. We took over the Fridley Senior Program from the city of Fridley as of the end of March, and so we've been doing a lot of meeting and greeting with seniors in all a variety of groups, Stephen's been doing his best to kind of have a seamless transition to that program. The seniors will be meeting at the ALC building during the summer during our construction, so we don't stop their programming there into bingo and all the things that they, that they do every week, so we're hoping to have them at the ALC for the summer. Our youth and aquatics, we've had some transition with staffing, right now, we have somebody doing youth and aquatics while Stephen has taken over some of the other pieces, but I'll talk a little bit in the next slide about it, staff we're hiring there. But our aquatics program has really had record attendance this year, the pool was closed last year a bit for some remodel, so it's been nice to have it open, and it continues to be very popular, our swim classes and open swim. And as Dan talked about in terms of the rentals, we have many long-term rentals, not only at the high school, but across the district. The community center is pretty much busy seven days a week, morning till night, high school, middle school, we have churches that meet on Sunday in all those buildings, and so, very busy with rentals. So, upcoming additions, that youth service coordinator that I talked about will be taking over the zone from the city of Fridley as well, so we're looking to hire someone who will deal with targeted services, youth enrichment, aquatics, and the IB preschool. Construction this summer in our building, it's year three, speaking of thanking the voters, it's year three of that referendum, so our building will be going through some major remodeling. The biggest piece is gonna be very much upgraded security for the Fridley Community Center, which will be great. The enrollment center and transportation will be moving over to our building, so really, hopefully, once fall gets there, we're gonna have a lot more streamlined experience for families to be able to come kind of to one stop to start off and register and deal with that early childhood programming. Also, we're gonna be hiring some more resources for our building, again, the more kiddos we've had in our building, the more we've realized we need some more support staff, so social workers, psychologists, health aid will all be starting in the fall, so we're looking forward to that. And that is what we have for you tonight, if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer.
This isn't a question, I'm just really impressed with the wraparound services for the family throughout their whole life, really, through the services of Fridley community education and early childhood. It's very impressive, and I just really appreciate the collaborative and creative energy that you guys bring to looking, you're just very problem-solving focused, like, we can figure it out, and really exciting.
A lot to look forward to.
You put the community in community education.
Yeah.
We try. Well, and I have to say, I guess as parting, that I really have to thank Peggy, Dr. Flapman, for her unending support of Community Ed. I mean, I don't think we would be doing a lot of the program we're doing if it weren't for Peggy's support. She knows what we do, and she supports what we do, and she pushes us to do more, so, yeah, she and Matt have been tremendously supportive of our programming and helping us figure out funding and all those pieces, so it feels, you know, it does feel good, so, thank you.
And it's been fun to kind of go down memory lane from a number of years ago, when, you know, the bottom line didn't look so good, and we have come a long, long way from that, so you guys have done tremendous work, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to invite up Jaiel McLemore, our communications director, with a volunteer appreciation video.
Thank you. Last Thursday, the district held its sixth annual volunteer appreciation breakfast at the Fridley Community Center, and we received about a hundred and forty nominations from our schools, and typically, our schools just send us names of the volunteers that work in their buildings all year round. Some of them work in specific schools, some of them support our specific programs. So it's always good to see repeat volunteers in there, because we know that they are committed, they are very invested in the education of our students, and every single year, they show up, and we are very grateful for that. So when I look at those names every year, I see parents, grandparents, who are coming back to their children's schools, and they are not specifically volunteered in their classroom, but they're in the building, whatever is needed for them, they support that. So they help with so many, many, many things that our students and our classrooms and our teachers need. Field trips, they do fundraising, they support front office things, and they do all sorts of things, and sometimes, when you're in the buildings, you can't miss them, you see familiar faces all the time, so it's always a pleasure to meet this. Men and women volunteers are a very integral part of our school community fabric, and we really appreciate the support that they give us. So we do know that we were not able, some of them were not able to join us, we had a short presentation that we shared with those folks who were there, and if there are volunteers who are watching tonight, community members who are watching, this is from our teachers, who shared with us what volunteers mean for them. And on behalf of the school district, we appreciate the helping hands, we appreciate the generosity, and we appreciate your continued support, we know our students benefit tremendously from it, so, take it away.
I'm gonna tell you all the things that the volunteers do for us.
Kindergarten registration night welcomes in all the families.
Develop students' writing, help them with research skills.
Be better readers.
She makes a slideshow for our schools.
Pre-game meals.
She sets up and facilitates and really works with a lot of our kids.
Some spelling words and high-frequency words.
She'll cut out laminating things for us.
Fundraise for numerous things.
Funds for projects, and has programs around the school, gets the yearbooks.
Winter weather gear for students and shoes.
Reads with the kids individually, they read fluency passage.
Special mailings.
Helping with costumes, makeup.
Brings copies, he makes copies.
Help run advanced math groups.
Any makeup work that we might have to make up if we're absent.
Come on field trips with us.
Provides them with a new friend to play with.
Clean up the baseball field and the softball field.
Brought in, like, donuts and cookies and refreshments for the celebration, which just makes it feel just a little bit more, a little bit extra, which I think it's always good to have students feel that way.
They were so happy that somebody would take time out of their day to do this, they couldn't believe somebody would retire and come back to help them.
The students appreciate having an adult to look up to that they know is gonna be there for them, they come in every week.
It also just provides a lot of opportunity for them to develop both interpersonal and academic skills that are different than what you might have with a teacher.
It's just amazing that they get to just fill these kids up and just bring them joy just being here.
It helps their social, emotional well-being, and helps them develop more skills to be able to communicate and function in a school environment.
Huge mentorship opportunities and seeing like, oh, like, that sounds like a really interesting career, I would never have thought of that.
The students get to see the engagement piece between the parents, the students, the staff, within the community, and that helps our students to see how they can also get involved with any type of community events that's going on, so this kind of paves the way for our students to also look for ways that they can contribute to their community as well.
She's that role model, that person that, at eighty, I hope I am.
Volunteers help alleviate some of the stress on teachers, they can help with small groups.
Just like the small little jobs that I don't always have time to do, helps me really be a better teacher, and I couldn't do my job, and I couldn't work with my amazing kids without the help of them.
It takes her about an hour to do that, I just don't have that hour in my day to read with those kids individually, and so that's something that is very valuable, that they get read with individually, once a week at least.
When these kids see that somebody's coming in to hang out and help in their classroom on their own time, I think it's a wonderful thing for kids to see.
Volunteers, I think, are a great model to teach, like, empathy and respect and, like, caring for your common neighbor, and that you're maybe not doing something just to get something out of it.
Your kids don't come up and go, hey, thanks mom and dad for being here, and hey, thanks for helping out, I said, but deep down inside, they're watching, and I think your payback is when they have kids, because they're gonna remember what you did for them, and that's how they'll treat their own children.
Her positive influence on them encourages them to be positive towards other people as well.
Our ability to have volunteers in the building not only allows us to show off the great work that our students do here, but also allows our students to get a little bit more broader worldview.
When you volunteer, you give yourself an opportunity to grow as well, so not only are you impacting the lives of those around you, you're making a change within yourself.
Could not do all that we do without you, and I just want to thank you for coming in and being so selfless with your time and just your great attitudes, you are awesome.
Your help is so appreciated to us teachers and to the lives and the learning of the students.
And it helps everyone to know that there are a lot of people out there who care about these kids and care about their education.
From correcting papers, to sorting things out, to passing things, to getting up our calendars, all of that stuff, it just wouldn't be possible without you.
I really want to tell you what a great blessing you are to our district and to our kids.
Thank you for coming in and helping with copies and games and small groups. The classroom is not as successful without them.
Thank you, volunteers.
Thank you, volunteers.
Thank you, volunteers.
Thank you, volunteers.
Thank you, volunteers!
Thank you to all of our wonderful volunteers.
Thank you, volunteers.
Thank you, volunteers!
Thank you, volunteers!
Thank you, volunteers!
Thank you, volunteers, you guys mean the world to us.
Thank you, volunteers, we couldn't do this without you.
Very well-done video, that was very nice, I'm always disappointed when the reception conflicts every year with a work thing that I have, but, thank you, this is, this is the community that continues to support our Fridley schools in many, many ways.
Thank you, volunteers.
One, two, three. It's a good, actually, transition to our business action item, which is a resolution accepting gifts to the Fridley School District, which is another way that our community gives back to our district. So therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary a total of three hundred and ten dollars, Fridley Women of Today and Leah Likness. The following persons donated to Hayes Elementary for a total of two hundred and fifty dollars, Fridley Women of Today. The following persons donated to Fridley Middle School for a total of two thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents, Success Beyond the Classroom, another name for it, Metro ECSU, with funding donated from the Jam F Corporation, provided the opportunity for fifty-two sixth graders from Fridley Middle School to attend a STEM Link field trip at Dunwoody College of Technology. The following persons donated to Fridley High School for a total of one hundred dollars, Nancy Bleagan. Do I have a motion to accept these donations?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Riddle, and this is a resolution, so we'll have the clerk call the roll. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
We have another resolution coming up, providing for the sale of general obligation taxable OPEB refunding bonds, and I'm gonna ask Matthew Hammer to just give us an intro to that before we take a vote.
Tonight, this is the first step of the process, we have a resolution before you tonight to authorize the sale of general taxable obligation other post-employment bonds for refunding, that we're anticipating at this point in time, hopefully, to get around ninety to a hundred thousand dollars in savings, that will be taxpayer savings for our district taxpayers. This is the first step of that process, this is the authorization of the sale that we're putting in front of you tonight. At our next meeting, we will have received our bids for the bond sale, and we'll bring those results to you guys, assuming that everything stays intact with what we're assuming that we're gonna receive for savings.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Prueado. Before we do the call, the roll call, I'd just like to clarify for our voters that this is much like a refinance on a home mortgage, where there's a cheaper, lower interest rate, so by refinancing, so to speak, you bring your rate down and save money, so this is a very similar scenario only with bonds, is that correct?
That is correct, they call it a call of our bonds, and there are specific times that we can do that with our bond issuance.
Okay. Any, so with that, we'll take the call.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Riddle?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Resolution passed. Next, we have approval of the 2017 to 19 administrative contracts, and that will be Mr. Hammer again.
Tonight, we have two motions in front of you, I'll lump the next two together, we have- We have our approval of our Fridley Association of School Principals contract and our custodial contract, and we'd like to thank everybody for the process that we went through, staying within our budget specifications, and we have both those contracts in front of you tonight for approval.
Move to approve both the admin and the custodian contracts for 2017 to 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Riddle, seconded by Starks, and that is for both contracts, so we'll take, all those in favor of passing both contracts, please say aye.
Aye.
Both contract motions carried. Next up, a second reading and adoption of policy. This is policy 902, use of school district facilities.
So this is a second reading of that policy, and there are no changes from the first reading.
Do I have a motion to approve the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Pruado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, the consent agenda. This is an agenda of routine action items, including minutes of the regular school board meeting and work session held in April, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements, an MOU for maintenance technician at Fridley Middle School, an MOU for custodian wages, the 2018-19 bus stops, the 2018-19 student parent handbook, the MOU for sidewalk trail construction, approval of lease purchase agreements for computers and hardware. Any, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion by Pruado, seconded by Sampson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Dr. Flathman, if you would talk with us about student enrollment.
In your packet is the May 1st numbers on there, and what we had, what we would have predicted as going down in May, which we have traditionally done, we actually went up slightly, which again is kind of baffling. However, these numbers are ones which we talked about in the work session about building our preliminary budget assumptions for that, so I believe we'll make our revised budget numbers for this year, and then that helps sets us for next year. So you will see at the next board meeting, we'll have June 1st and then our very last day of school, so that will complete the year for the enrollment.
Thank you. Reports from school board members. Schools for Equity and Education meeting held on April 20th. Were you, Ms. Thornton is not with us this evening. Were you?
Yes, yeah, we were able to attend. There was a great presentation from a woman from NAMI, which is the Mental Health Association, and some work that they are doing and legislation that they would like to see, and so again, it's an organization that we work with directly and has given support to not only parents but most importantly, for staff here, and so they do a fabulous job. So that was the presentation and then pontification of what the legislative session would be, so.
Thank you. Next, Northeast Metro 916 School Board Meeting held on May 2nd, and I will do the report out on this. We heard a report from Kate Roselli, who is with the Hazleton Betty Ford Foundation, and District 916 has a partnership with them, and she does outreach in the schools. This is the second year she's been doing that in the 916 district, and the energy she came in with about the exciting conversations and the openness and the trust that is happening between her and students in the district who are openly talking with her about substance abuse, asking questions, getting resource assistance, and it's really exciting, the preventative work that is being done through that partnership. The Cora Education Center construction will be completed this summer. They approved a revised 18 budget, and we had a request to support the, we didn't take a vote on it, but we learned about Stillwater District's resolution regarding services for students with dyslexia, and the 916 school district is meeting, or I believe, met already between that board meeting and tonight with all the special education directors from all the 916 school district members to examine how are schools dealing with dyslexia? What are they seeing? Are teachers prepared to examine that? It's not in the regular testing regimen when students go through that. So learned a lot about that process, and there's also some things in the legislature around that as well. Those were the big reports from the 916 meeting. Association of Metropolitan School Districts, or AMSD, board meeting held on May 4th. Do you have a report for us on that?
Yeah, I do. The Office of the Legislative Auditor was there to give their report on the study that was done this past year on early childhood programming. What we learned about this evening with our early childhood program, there are a lot of pieces that go into it, and yet, children, when parents bring children, and you know, birth to five to us, they want us to serve the children, and you know, she talked about equity. Mary Kay, you mentioned the word wraparound services, and so parents don't really care what program they're in, they want to know that we have high-quality programming for them. And the interesting piece with the Office of the Legislative Auditor was that there are some very different structures because of when things came into being, so rules are different and those kinds of things. So I would suspect that down the road, this will like be a conversation that will happen at the legislature to maybe better align programming, so. And if I may, go back to the written information, I just want to call your attention to the first reading of policy 903. We just put some clarifying information on there so that it becomes more clear on what our expectations are of who visitors are.
Thank you. Important future school board dates, and there are many coming up in the next month. Fridley Public Schools Retirement Reception, which is tomorrow, May 16th at 4:00 PM at the Fridley Community Center. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting, May 16th at 6:15 PM at the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Office. The 60th Scholastic Achievement and Recognition Banquet, and this is sponsored by The Lions, which is a long, a long history of them doing that, which is on May 17th at 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM is the banquet, 7:00 PM is the recognition ceremony, and that's at Fridley High School in the cafeteria and the auditorium. Schools for Equity and Education, May 24th from 9:00 to 12:30 at the Radisson Hotel in Roseville. The Association for Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting, which is May 25th from 7:00 to 9:00 AM at the Ties Conference Center. Fridley High School Graduation, May 31st, 7:00 PM at Roy Wilkins Auditorium. The Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting, June 6th at 6:00 PM at the Bel Air School, and the Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting, June 19th, with a work session at 5:30 in City Hall Conference Room A, and open forum at 7:00 PM in City Conference Room A, and the business meeting at 7:30 in the City Council Chambers. And I believe that will be our last meeting for the district's year. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Riddle, seconded by Pruado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:30 PM.